Okay, I call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of December 15th. The second item on the agenda is a consent agenda of items A through C.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Okay, submit your vote, please. See the votes? Unanimous by all those present approving consent agenda items A through C on our agenda. Agenda item number three, discussion of possible action concerning resolution number 2015-25 concerning a land exchange with the state of Oklahoma. Staff?
Yep. What we want to do is begin the process of looking at exchanging lands between the Guthrie Public Works Authority and the Commissioners of Land Office. The Commissioners Land Office currently owns approximately 120 acres that are left that are located to the east of Roma's and to the north of Walmart. And the Guthrie Public Works Authority owns approximately about 160 acres north and south of Highway 33 that encompass around the hospital and around our Public Works Authority. I think that it may be advantageous for our authority in our city to own the land that's closer to the centralized location of our community. And we just want to begin the process to see if there's an ability for the swapping of that land. So, any questions will be more than happy to answer.
Do we have any idea of approximate timeline that this is?
We do, that's in your package. And you'll see that, you know, it'll take a few weeks for them to get it in and start that. Then we have to go through the process of having people come in and appraise the properties. Then after that, they have to go through their process and bring it back before us so we can go through our process. But yeah, it'll take five to six months total in order for this entire process to take place. And we'll keep you guys apprised of every time we take a step in that process.
How many times do we need to make a decision?
Oh, probably at this time to begin the process. Then I would say in the central part of the process, after the appraisals come in, then to finalize it.
Can we just buy the land?
We could, but they have to go through a competitive bidding process. And I'm not necessarily wanting to get into a kind of bidding war with anyone else out there that may want that property.
I know who you're talking about.
Yep.
Well, clearly, the potential for that land swap in terms of bringing it closer to the center of the city is, could be really, really.
It could be, and I'm not, I'm not going to talk it up too much because I want to make sure that praisers know that our land is worth a lot more than theirs, at least at this point in time.
Of course it is. Okay.
Motion, we accept resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Submit your vote, please.
All votes to run.
See the votes? It's unanimous to accept that resolution to begin a process with the state on some land exchange. With that, we adjourn our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting, and we will move into our city council meeting. Do we have any public comments? Nobody signed in for public comments or announcements or recognitions?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Item number three on the agenda is consent agenda. Consent agendas A through F, which is, item A is the approval of the minutes of December 1st. B is amendment to lease at hangar space 6A. C is approval of declaring an emergency and waiving the bidding and advertising process for the disposal of the debris from our last ice storm. Item D is approval of budget items, again, six items that were listed in the Guthrie Public Works meeting also. E is approval to deny tort claim number 201246-ME. And item number F is consider of approval to deny tort claim number 201253-LR. Both of those last two as recommended by the OMEG.
So moved.
Second. Do I have a second? And is there any further discussion? Is there anybody present representing either of those tort claims? Hearing none? Submit your vote, please.
All votes to run.
Let's see the votes. It's unanimous to approve all those items on the consent agenda, items A through F. Item number four, discussion, possible action to approve a lease agreement for office space with the city, Guthrie City Hall, and the Guthrie Chamber of Commerce. Discussion. Staff?
I'll kind of go, kind of go the background of this. I know in discussions with the CEO, Hedy Coleman, at the Chamber of Commerce, we're looking at a way to support each other's organization. The Chamber of Commerce traditionally being the largest organization of businesses in a community, and the city being a direct recipient off of a healthy, active business community through a growing economy and gains sales tax for us. I know that after, I guess it was 15 months ago or so, that we had, for lack of a better term, a division between the Chamber of Commerce, CVB, and the city. At since that point in time, I think the Chamber of Commerce was looking at a way to become a stronger, better chamber in the areas of supporting business in our local economy. And as I was trying to come up with ideas to help support them in their endeavors on their new mission, I was trying to think of ideas to help them reduce costs and overhead in administration. And while I was in my office one day and I looked at the old picture of City Hall, I noticed there was a sign on the City Hall that said Chamber of Commerce. So I approached Hedy one day as he was walking by my office, and I just asked him, I said, would there be a possibility if you guys maybe wanted to relocate the Chamber offices into City Hall and us providing and exchanging services for the office and me to help out, or the city to help out in the administration of them while they try to resume their mission as a chamber. And at that point in time, Hedy said he would take it back and start discussions with the board, and I've been before the board and have discussed that idea, and I'm sure that they've continued that discussion since then. I have put together this lease agreement between the city and the Chamber of Commerce for them to come over and then occupy approximately about 850 square feet of the northeast corner of the third floor of City Hall. And they'd also have the ability to access our third floor conference room for meetings that they may have, both of their chamber board and their committees, on a month-to-month basis. In return, we'll receive the in-kind services that you guys have in your packet based upon us being one of their primary investors, then also having sponsorships throughout activities all year long. And also in the agreement, you guys will see that they'll be responsible for, I think, their copier services, their phone services, but everything else above and beyond that that would go for a typical lease is in there that would be covered by the city, just like we're using that office space right now. So, with all that being said, I know that we have a board member and CEO of the Chamber here to address any questions that the council may have.
Questions of any council members?
You look like me. Sounds good to me, yeah.
No arguments.
I've got, I've got, I've got a couple, actually.
I do, actually.
I have a couple. You know, I think all of us deal with unintended consequences of things that look good, and then there are other consequences that happen that have a negative. I think it's clearly the opportunity to work closely with the, with the Chamber and the city is a very, very positive thing. And, and I think that would be certainly promoted by close proximity. One of the things that I have a concern about is the visibility and the availability of the space that, or moving to the space. Visibility, of course, that, that the Chamber has now is superb. I mean, right across from the post office, storefront, easily accessible, people walking in, easily to give, give directions to. And I'm a little bit concerned about if, how that is impacted by the move to the, to the third floor. And, Hedy, I don't know if you want to address that, if you, if you and your board have discussed those kinds of things. Bruce has already identified that we used to have a sign on the front of the building, and obviously, we can.
We can still do that. And I think, I think more anything else, it's a, it's a matter of what people are going into the building for. Since the relocation of the CVB into City Hall, at that point in time, the people that are looking for information about the community, especially those from outside the community that may be here identifying us and using us as a tourism destination, wouldn't necessarily get all the information they need from the Chamber of Commerce at this point in time anyway, because we've taken that stuff in-house. So when it comes to anybody that's from out of town looking for that information, we still have the ability to provide that at this location, just as they would over there at that location. I understand the direct convenience factor of it being on, you know, street level, but at this point in time, I think that's probably going to be a long-term vision of ours to figure out how to disseminate that information out there to people, whether it's through signage, whether it's through kiosks, whether it's through having people available to answer the questions. And that's one of the things that we want to make available to the Chamber at this point in time, is the staff that we have here, that people traditionally have come to assume that we'd be able to provide that information to them, because I know that we have Lori currently in-house, and we also have probably the friendliest person of Guthrie setting up on that third floor greeting everybody that comes off the elevator, and Andrea. And to have them come in and be available eight hours a day, five days a week, throughout the week, is actually more of a positive than going over to the Chamber of Commerce right now. And I think, Hedy, you're a staff of one. So, there's a possibility that even at this point in time, people wouldn't be able to get information over there, which would be much more available over here on a, on a weekly basis. That's my thoughts.
I had a question, went along with what you asked about the space in downtown. Is that going to leave another building empty?
It is. And I've talked to Newt about that yesterday. He came up directly and had questions and let me know his concerns. And my response back to him was, our Chamber of Commerce right now has probably a membership of closing, closing in on 300. And I want to take a helicopter approach to our viewing of our businesses. And I told him that I definitely understand that there'd be another opening downtown, and it may affect the Farmers Museum, the owner of that property directly. But I'm much more concerned about the other 350 members of the Chamber of Commerce and our growth potential of up to 400-plus. And I want them to have a successful, vibrant, and mission-driven Chamber of Commerce. And if the overhead that they're currently paying doesn't allow them to do that, then we're missing out on that potential.
Yeah, I think a couple things. One would be if we had a sign on the building.
You want to identify who you are, and then I think that, I hope that speaker's on there. Everybody knows who you are, but just for, for our viewing audience and for our official, here comes the man that's going to turn the mic on, I think. Well, maybe not. Okay. Let's try that again.
Yeah, you know what I was going to say? So, Hedy, CEO of Guthrie Chamber of Commerce, what I was going to say is, one, to address the, the thought about the visibility. If we did put a sign out on the current City Hall, us being on the corner of Second and in Oklahoma, today I had somebody come to my office and they couldn't even find it. You know, so I don't think it's so much as that, that, that space being something super visible is more so visible here. Another thing that we have to think about is the traffic that we already have coming into City Hall, our local people. And so when we think about the Chamber, most of those people who currently come in there are tourists, and they're looking for restaurants and, restaurants and maybe hotels, something of that nature. But the Chamber has many more investors than just that sector of people. You have the schools, you have hairstylists and people of that nature, and we're going to get way more exposure here at the City Hall with the local traffic paying their water bills and such here. So I'm excited about maybe that possibly be an opportunity to put our investors in front of many more local people that can shop here. Another thing is that, so November, I would say that we may have had, let's say, 200 people come through our doors in November, maybe at the most, 150 to 200 people. On our website, we probably had almost 4,000. And just to think about that, we started that website in July when I first got here, I built that, that website. And to be able to say that now we can start investing dollars into things like online and things of that nature, not saying that's the so-all, be-all, but at the same time, it just shows you that most of the traffic's going online than anything else. And we're currently redesigning our online directory and also our calendar to make it much more accessible on not only the desktop, but also the computer, because when you look at the stats currently, there's 54% of people going to our website from their mobile versus desktop as well. So, again, if we can begin to utilize some of our budget to really expose those things, from when you talk about 95 people went to our website in July, to almost 3,500 or so in November, and that's me being by myself, and then also we're having our attendance and events going up where people are beginning to engage. I've had three people within the last three days say that they were going to coffee with other people and doing lunch because of the Chamber Coffee. So, those are the real things that you want. And when you talk about a Newt, I grew up in Guthrie, and I've been watching Newt all my life. And so I want to be able to sit across from young people 20 years from now and know that the Chamber has supported them in a sense that where it wasn't just the Chamber, it was the City Hall and all the other leaders in our community, because that's how we're going to begin to win.
Okay. Certainly Bruce identified a number of the, the reasons that this is, is on the agenda and the positives from, from the city perspective. Obviously, you've identified some shifting of resources that you can use, those rent resources, I guess, for other purposes, is what you're saying, that would be beneficial for the, for the Chamber as well as for, obviously, Guthrie.
Yeah.
What, do you see other benefits of moving to the, the third floor of City Hall?
One, I think it just speaks to our community that our leadership are coming together to begin to serve in a greater capacity together versus us doing it separately. And we've always had a great partnership, but at the same time, how do we continue to cultivate that? And what does that look like, the example we're setting for the rest of the community? So, I see that being one. I'll be down the hall from the city manager. So when new businesses do come in, the opportunity to introduce them and be able to speak to that, I think that speaks volumes. To have an admin help, because I am a one-man show, plus some great volunteers, but not a woman show, but we have a board and all them. But in the office, it's typically just me, and I'm out and about quite a bit. To have somebody there, and again, Andrea's the greatest, to have her being welcoming and everything like that would be probably, that may be the biggest thing that you can do, do for us, is if you just bring Andrea over, no. Andrea, then I get Newt to give me free rent, we'd be good to go.
You're good, you're good, you're good then.
So, but no, I think, but again, I think the Chamber's just in a, in a position right now that we're kind of rebranding and kind of regrouping based off the separation of the CVB and Chamber.
Okay. The, the visibility issue, we both talked about, you talked about historically a sign on the building, you've talked about some signage on the corner. Is that something that the city's going to pay for, the Chamber's going to pay for? Haven't got that far down the road.
Well, I've seen some signs that they have in their office right now that'll work out there, but that's something we can have discussion as we go forward, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can use the current signage. I mean, I think we just be careful of what does that look like on the, on the building, but.
Okay.
I got a question, Steve, for Bruce.
Go ahead.
For Bruce. Do you foresee any potential conflicts in the use of time up there on the third floor between city employees and the Chamber folk?
No, at the end of the day, they're still underneath my discretion, so I don't see any conflict of issue there. I will say this, that we have an underutilized resource right now in Andrea, anyway. I'm probably the world's worst city manager when it comes to using an administrative assistant, just for the fact that I love doing everything myself. And after doing it for 17 years, there's a lot of shortcuts that I know that I just go out and do instead of having it signed over to anybody. So, anyway, that's one of those things that I think that will actually help utilize all of our resources or sources that we have in the, in the, on the third floor right now, anyway, so.
I have one more question if I could ask. Just when a festival or something like that's going on, do we foresee people coming into the third floor on a Saturday or Sunday when we're closed? Or are you going to have like a kiosk out in the city that says this is a chamber out there taking those questions? Or are you going to funnel people up to the third floor on a Saturday and Sunday when this building's not really open?
Yeah, I mean, no, we would definitely, maybe a kiosk or something like that. One of the things is we have a gazebo out there on Division and Harrison, and I've already been talking to Lori about really making sure that we get that thing up to par so people can start going in and out of there. Currently, the Chamber does not oversee any festivals or anything like that. We're strictly a Chamber, the CVB has been managing most of that, so.
Okay.
And again, I think we're still separate entities, we're just leasing space.
Yeah, but I think the point is, again, going back to my point of accessibility, is when we have things like, for instance, the Territorial Christmas, 89ers, that the, your office is open, but those, those hours may not coincide with the hours that City Hall building is open. And I believe that was the, the question.
Yeah. Territorial Christmas is currently, it's on 501(c)(3) now. They just utilized it this one year. They're, they're on their own for the most part, and so they probably could definitely find other space if needed. You know, I don't think that we'll, we would save just for this one event, we're now going to give up the opportunity to save X amount of dollars or do whatever the case may be. But we'll continue to support in whatever way. But I think that gazebo on, again, Division and Harrison would be great for that kind of thing, so.
What is the savings?
We would save approximately between $13,000 and $15,000 a year. And then, again, with admin help, that's, that could be, if we, if we went out and hired somebody, it would be, you could say, $40,000 bucks a year.
Yeah. So I got a question for Bruce. What, on the space upstairs?
Uh-huh.
You don't foresee needing to utilize that in any additional headcount to the city in the future?
No. Not for the term of this agreement.
Bruce, there's a question, maybe a tougher one. What is, what are you most worried about in this potential, in the partnership? Anything, you know, maybe nothing, I don't know, but I just want.
Oh, the only thing, the only, the only downside is this, I'm making Kevin mad for kicking him out of his office, so, but I can handle that heat. I outrank him.
Where's the rest of the office? That's, that's not 850 square feet.
No, there's a couple offices adjacent to it.
Oh, is there?
Yeah.
So we underutilize the third floor, is that?
Yes, I mean, but that's, but that's just it, though, is that there's space addition, there's additional space for them to move to. And the reason I picked that location is the second-best office in the entire building. And as people come in that are our business community, or people that are looking to come in to be part of our business community, I want them to have that view of the Apothecary Garden and shooting down Oklahoma Avenue, because I got a beautiful view, and now they'll have a beautiful view of that, too. So that speaks volumes when you bring people into an atmosphere like that.
Yeah, I understand, it used to be the mayor's office.
It's awesome. That was the city manager.
Just kidding, just kidding.
And let me say this as well, depending on if it's approved or not, and my board still has, you know, I think we've talked about it, and I think everybody's kind of in agreement with it, but I just don't want, because it is on air, and I don't want people thinking, oh, they've already made a decision. We need to first know that you all said yes, or whatever the case may be, and then we go back.
So your board is still in discussion at this point?
Uh.
And gathering information or whatever?
We can say that, but they're pretty, I think we're going to be good.
Okay, all right. What about the, the future? What about the growth potential? Obviously, as I looked at the third floor, that pretty much takes up, the, the space that we're talking about now pretty much covers everything that's up there.
The growth potential as far as the Chamber goes?
In terms of the need for more space down the road.
Oh, we hope they have an incredible need for, yeah, down the road. So, I mean, that's the goal, is that, so.
850 square feet's pretty good.
Yeah, that's a lot of space. So, so the chambers across Oklahoma, the ones that I've experienced, and I've, and I've went and visited a few, typically, they only have staffed to two to four, and that's double the size of our Chamber. So, Pona City has Chamber of maybe eight, 700 people, and they have a staff of really three. The other person's a CVB person, so, and one of those people are part-time. And so Chalk Tall is another one, their, their chamber is bigger than ours, and they run a staff of one and then a couple of part-time people. And some of those people, depending on what that looks like and work from home, I'm all for that.
So you're going to save, what you said, about 60, 70,000 dollars at the max?
Say it again, what numbers?
You're an employee.
No, what, what number did you say?
Oh, it's about, I don't know, 60,000 dollars?
No, he said 15, he's 13 to 15.
Yeah, yeah.
With an employee, another about 40.
Exactly. So, in reality, you're going to get that tight, I mean, what do you, you're going to use money from your savings? How are you going to use it?
Well, no, we got to save first. We got to begin to save money up. But some of the things is, we, we're currently working on doing a, a foundation, and so we want to utilize, begin to grow funding that way so we can support things like education, because a big picture for us is to grow the quality of life in Guthrie, America. And there's a lot of chambers, Oklahoma City being one, really participate in, in bond issues and things of that nature that go back to the quality of life. So, we want to begin, begin to support those kind of things as well. Mm-hmm. But down the road, if, if y'all did end up kicking us out, we still, we would need to get a new location, so we want to save and do those kind of things right now. Right now, it's just really, since the CVB has left, financials, finances are tight.
You know, I'd like to make a motion to approve it. Second. Okay. Any further discussion? Submit your vote. It's unanimous to approve the availability of the space on the third floor of City Hall with, for the use by the Chamber. Item number five, discussion and possible action on resolution 2015-26 to support the Belmont development. Staff, comment?
I'll turn this one over to Cody.
Good evening. This is basically an extension of a letter of support that was issued last year. The term of one year has expired, and Belmont and their representatives will be going before the Oklahoma Housing Finance Agency in January of 2016. And you do have a representative here representing Belmont.
Okay, any further discussion? Is this again for a one-year extension? Okay. Submit your vote.
All votes to run.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of that resolution 2015-26. Item number six, discussion and possible action on the mayor's appointment of one council member as a city representative on the ACOG Board of Directors, the Intermodal Transportation Policy Committee, Garber Wellington Policy Committee, and the 911 Association Board of Directors.
I'll speak to this. I'll speak to this. Currently, right now, our primary representative is Mr. Thomas. Mr. Thomas has a conflict at that point in time, which they typically take days, which are on Thursdays.
Thursday of the month.
And.
I'm teaching every Thursday.
And he's teaching every Thursday. So, anyway, we have an ability to go down there and have, we want to have a representative there as much as possible on those days. There's quite a bit of money that flows, flows through any council of government in the state of Oklahoma, and I want to make sure that we're down there and representing the city of Guthrie as well as we can, and be able to represent our interests there at any of those Board of Directors meetings or any of those other committees that you just mentioned there. So, with all that being said, I know that it says on here that it's the mayor's appointment, but if anybody on this council, it'd be my suggestion that we nominate the mayor to be down there. He's been doing that as the backup role up to this point in time. I think it'd be phenomenal in that role in the future.
Second. So moved, second, and a third.
I'm non-voting.
I'm not sure the mayor can nominate himself.
No, but the, actually, it states in there that he'd be a city council member, and you're, you're, you're directly part of that.
Okay. As long as we're. We've already voted. There is more discussion. Okay, so I've been the alternate.
Take a blank.
And I have been, I have been participating. If, if I were to move up to the primary, there is a need for an alternate. I would ask if there would be a volunteer amongst the councilmen.
Take your blanket with you when you go, because I've been to those meetings, and they can put you to sleep real fast.
So are you volunteering to be the alternate?
I'll go if you want me to. I enjoyed it the last couple times I went.
Are you?
I'm volunteering.
Volunteering.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes. Need a motion for that also.
So moved for both of them.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to move the, myself, the mayor, as the primary, and, and you, lucky person, as the alternate.
I'll let you borrow my blanket and my.
Councilman Taylor. Okay, all right. Please submit your vote.
All votes to run.
It's unanimous that we have new, new primary and new alternate for the ACOG meeting. Thank you very much. Item number seven, city manager report.
I actually have two things. I actually have two things I want to mention tonight. I know that we had it on both consent agendas for the GPWA and the city of Guthrie, but just so people know a little bit more on our declaration of emergency, all the debris that we have been collecting over the last several weeks, it has been going over to our convenience center. Our convenience center has a limited amount of space for all that debris, and we're just looking at the best possible and most efficient and cost-effective way in order to do that, and typical bid process will take 90 days plus in order for us to have that debris removed or other disposal options, and that declaration of emergency just allows me to go out there and make the, the best decision in the quickest possible time in order to alleviate the situation we have from the, the latest ice storm and all the debris that's been built up. So I wanted the, the citizens who are watching tonight to know that. And secondly, and probably the most important manager report I'll ever give, I want to say Merry Christmas to everybody, so, and guys, enjoy your break.
I'm also on that debris. Please don't bring your junk from your house. I have passed trucks that's headed down there with tree limbs, and I can see junk being thrown underneath it, so I think they're going to sneak it in, but it's not happening.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, item number eight, request comments from council members. Councilman Thomas.
Just going to say, you know, Territorial Christmas was, the first one was, seemed like a big, big deal, and the house tour, I think, went okay from my perspective. We were pretty busy at my house. There's a lot, lot going on, and I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, and see you guys next year, just our last meeting this year.
Councilman Barthold.
Same, just Merry Christmas, and be safe and be happy.
Humbug.
Humbug. We won't do the humbug, we don't do humbug.
Councilman Johnwood.
Just Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Good.
Good.
Councilman, Councilwoman Paget.
Thank you. I think that the crew that has gone around and picked up the, the limbs, the branches, has worked really hard, it's beginning to look really good. Thank them for us, please. And a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to all of our residents and their visitors.
Councilman Taylor.
I'll second that, because I've seen a lot of the crews out, and I really appreciate what they're doing. I know it's a lot of work, but, you know, obviously, move back into the town area after they've been out south on South Division and all up in that area, so if you just have tree limbs, bring those, please do not bring your trash, because I've seen some of it been thrown out on some of the county roads already, so that's not good either, but, and I echo everybody else, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we'll see you next year.
And Happy Birthday to Maxine, too.
Yes, that's right. I forgot about-
Today's birthday?
It was yesterday or the day before.
Did you all sing?
She thought she was going to slip in.
Do you want us to sing?
No, we better not sing, they'll shut us down for sure.
My blank out.
Councilman Edwood.
Thank you. Well, reiterating what everybody else said, and have, everybody has a safe and very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year for all the staff and for all the council here. We'll be seeing you all next year, everybody be careful. Thank you again for everything everybody does, especially with staff in round. Don't forget Territorial Christmas.
Yeah.
And our Pollard Theater, so that's always a fun thing to do, so Merry Christmas.
Okay. Well, first of all, congrats to Steph, Stephanie Fortney as the territorial governor. Hard, hard fought and won campaign, I'm sure, but, but that was a, that was a, her crowning as the territorial governor was the, one of the highlights of the parade, which was extremely successful, and the lighting of the tree, which is wonderful, beautiful, and, and then, of course, the, the Victorian walk, and as Zee has said, the, the open house were just phenomenal. All of that is made possible by the foundation, Territorial Christmas Foundation, and the many, many volunteers that work to make it happen, and so congratulations, hats off to all of those people. There's so much that goes on behind the scenes to make it happen, but it does happen, and it's another, another feather in the cap of Guthrie, America, and something that we should be proud of. And if you haven't had a chance to be a part of the walk, you have another chance this Saturday. So for the locals that are looking in, or anybody else, please come down. We hope that the weather will be as it was last Saturday, wonderful, and, and another successful opportunity to see, see our, our community alive and in celebration. Also, I believe that most of the individuals viewing this will have received a survey concerning a, a list of quality of life issues that this council is, is asking for your input about as it relates to the resolution to increase the sales tax. And please, please give us your input. It is vital, it is critical, it is important to us, it does make a difference, but we want, we look, look forward to your input. So respond on that survey, there's already a stamped envelope that you can put it in, the one that you received in your utility bill, there's also a number of ways to access it online, and so please, please give us your input, if you would, please. And last thing I'd like to mention is we have the statewide mayor's conference coming to our city next month. There'll probably be in the neighborhood of 100 mayors from across the state here, with the conference being at the, at the temple, but a number of activities that we, we are, that are being planned for Thursday. The conference is Friday, January 22nd, but we're hoping to have a number of activities for Thursday and, and Saturday to, to give people an opportunity to see our, our great city and, and all the wonderful things that we've got going on right here, so look forward to that.
I was just going to say one other thing. When I did the Victorian walk on Saturday night, I'd usually dress up and walk around and smoke my pipe, and the most common question that was asked me was, is that mustache real?
And the answer is, no, it's not. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.
Drop the mic.